You want to go ahead and do your recommendation, your request while he's getting set up, give him a minute.
Alright, I will move on with recommendation request for personnel first. Would like to recommend that we approve the maternity leave for Samantha Green. She's currently our second, filling in in second grade and anticipates that that will begin at the end of February, beginning of March.
Can we approve maternity leave for Samantha Green? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Ian, seconds by Jeremiah. All in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side. Her leave is approved.
I would like to recommend the board approve Lucas Griffith as fifth grade girls' basketball volunteer assistant.
I get a motion to approve Lucas Griffith?
I'll make a motion.
Breonna makes a motion, can I get a second? Jeremiah, all in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side, Lucas is approved.
I would like to recommend to the board that we approve Emerald Golf as varsity volleyball coach.
Any questions or concerns about that? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ian made a motion to approve Emerald, second. Samantha, Jody, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side, Emerald's approved.
I would like to recommend that we approve Phoenix Fenna as JV volleyball coach. Should I say that right?
Alright, can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Alright, Jody makes a motion, can I get a second? Yes, I'll second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side, here you go, she's approved.
I would like to recommend that we approve John Miller as varsity boys cross-country coach.
Can I get a motion to approve John? Jeremiah, second. Jody, all in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side, John's approved.
I would like to make a recommendation, we approve Mark Mesmer as the varsity girls' cross-country coach.
I get a motion to approve Mark? Jeremiah, Breonna, you better second that, that's your pastor. Okay Ian, alright Ian, say it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side. Mark is approved.
I would like to recommend that we approve the resignation of Carrie Vallad as instructional assistant, special education high school. She was just hired, so if you're not, think you've just heard that name, she was just hired. But she has recently informed us that her situation has changed and will be moving, and so has stepped down from that position.
Can I get a motion to accept your resignation, Lou?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Breonna, second. Jeremiah, all in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side, you're accepted.
I want to make a recommendation on custodial staffing. A couple of things here. We have one, that you approved the resignation of a custodial staff member at the last board meeting, so we are moving to fill that. We have a few positions that we might need to fill before our next board meeting. So you may be familiar, in August when we were in heavy hiring season, we passed a motion to allow permission to hire for the next thirty days. If we get into that situation and we can't wait until the December board meeting. I do want to make you aware, if we were to do that again, you would still receive all of the applicant information before any applicant was offered a position. And it would all be pending board approval at the official board meeting. And also that you would be given information in regards to their interviewing status as well. So it would be still completely transparent, you would receive all applicant information and be able to review that. And it would still be pending formal board approval at the December meeting. This would allow us, if we need to fill a position, that we would be able to get them in place and not have to wait until the next board.
Hey, we trust you Dr. Smith. Can I get a motion to go ahead and give the pre-approval to hire positions before the next board meeting?
You know how many you're looking at?
Potentially two.
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second? Breonna made a motion, can I get a second? Jody made the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side.
I have one more. Approved Tammy Hale, and I did add to the bat, the last page in your board packet, it just happened today. And so it's fresh, hot off the press, as a part-time, nine-month evening custodian to replace our resignation of Presley last week.
Can I get a motion to accept that? I approve. Jeremiah, second.
Second.
Ian, all in favor, raise your right hand. Both same side, she's hired.
That is all that I have.
Sir, are you ready to give your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll go to that, then if everybody's okay with that.
There will be a show of talent component to this later, but sorry. First off, I'd like to pass this around. That is alright? I got to do my lovely civic duty on Monday, Tuesday, and I served in a jury and I picked up a frog in my throat during that time. So I sound a little bit like, I sincerely apologize for that. My name's Trey Hill, I'm with Energy Harness. We specialize in a series of things, but tonight's presentation will be on a UVC air filtration system. What that system primarily does is remove airborne pathogens like viruses, bacteria, mold, dust, dander, pollen from the air. Then cycle it through a series of UV lights where that breaks down from a DNA level and then go from there. We did install an initial phase of three units last week, I believe it was. One of them scrubbed legs and ran off and then suddenly came back to us. Any of you are familiar with that situation at all? Two, two units went into pre-k rooms and one unit went into the nurse's station. But before I kind of jump into that, I'd like to explain how this will go. I'll give you a little bit of a background on what the UV light is, what these fixtures do, the history of it. Currently, how it's used in most school settings. And then Dr. Smith asked us to put a proposal together. So we've got a multi-phase proposal that we'll walk through as well, if that's something that you guys are interested in. If that sounds like a plan, I'll jump in if that's okay. Any questions at this point? Perfect. If at any point I'm moving too fast or too slow, let me know. I was given ten minutes, I'll do my best to make sure I finish somewhere about that ninety-five. That's alright. So, first off, what is the overall purpose of what we're doing here? So we wouldn't drink dirty water, so why would we breathe dirty air? In two thousand eighteen, we developed a air filtration system based off of a UV light. Fundamentally and primarily initially, we were a LED lighting company. So we have designed and maintained our own LED lights for fifteen years. And we figured, hey, there is a space for aerosol disease reduction. There's a whole bunch of medical literature popping up. So we developed a system and then boom, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we deploy fifteen thousand units, mostly with ESR funds to schools, medical facilities to mitigate COVID nineteen. That was our first generation. Our second generation, we have redesigned to work outside of the COVID suite. So there's a full series of three hundred to four hundred diseases. We'll go through a couple of the most common later on, we will do. Essentially, what we do is we will pull air through a series of UV lights and traps. That UV light will affect viruses and bacteria, mold spores, and break those down to keep us from breathing in any of those viral bacterial pathogens. This technology is not new. It was initially developed in the late eighteen nineties. People found out at tuberculosis sanatoriums that people who sat under these strange purple lights, all of a sudden weren't as infectious as some of the others. If you are familiar with the movie Tombstone, anybody familiar with that one? So that final scene at the end where Doc Holliday is playing poker with Wyatt Earp, that would have been done under a UV light. They were one of the first institutions to institute some of this technology. Fast forward a hundred and thirty years, we are now looking at an LED technology that is safe and contained within its units. Essentially, what happens is as the air goes through, DNA makes up formulaically everything in the universe, right? Think of it as two ladders that are twisted together. The LED light will cause those two ladders to fall apart, rendering any viruses, bacteria, mold spores, dust, dander, other airborne allergens that come in contact with it completely and totally inert. As the UV band, band light causes the ladders to fall apart, everything is destroyed and the clean air gets circulated back into the room. This is a small subsection of the diseases that this unit will take care of on its first pass. So please keep in mind, there are more than nineteen varieties of COVID. There's over two dozen different varieties of strep, not to mention viral bacteria, pneumonias, and things like that. Initially, just straight off the gate, we are seeing increases in measles. We deployed fifteen hundred units to southwest Texas last spring to help combat the measles in the Seminole Hospital District. Obviously, flu is a big one for us here in central Indiana and the Midwest. Strep throat's a big one. I just put twenty-six units in a school in Illinois. Because twenty-five percent of their elementary schools absent due to strep throat. And of course, pneumonia, polio, meningitis, endocarditis, and as we go through kind of the chicken pox. Most of the students that we are seeing now, vaccination levels kind of fluctuate a little bit. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. The idea here is to be a little bit preemptive in taking care of some of those students who maybe haven't finished a vaccination suite. Or for some immunocomprom- compromising reason, they haven't had vaccination suite. The way that this works, it runs off of your standard electric system. It works on twelve to eighteen millijoules per square centimeter. We are now up to a thousand square feet, not seven hundred square feet in a standard classroom. There is some fan noise associated with this. What this will do is it will pull the air in through the room and cycle all of the air in a space up to a thousand square feet four times every hour. The idea therein is that the students in the back row don't get the students in the front row sick and nobody ends up getting the teacher sick. But at the same time, we are removing some of the other airborne dunk that we're breathing in. There's a lot of studies post-COVID about, there's this term that they coined called sick building center, right? It's all of the dust, it's the mold, it's the danders, it's the, the things that just grow inside those spaces that we breathe in. Our system works separate and independent from the HVAC system primarily for two reasons. First off, we don't want to dig into your HVAC system, avoid your warranty. That is a, that's a mistake waiting to happen. And secondly, your HVAC system is designed to move massive amounts of air and to clean the air that's coming from the outside in and from the inside out. This is designed to work separate and independent within its own space. So your air is moving, say for example, from class, the air from classroom one to two, three, and four. Whereas in this case, students in classroom one can potentially get students in classroom four sick. Now, the air within each space will be cycled through four times. So that the air that is moving through your HVAC system is now cleaned before it enters the HVAC system at every stop along the way. If that helps make a little bit more sense to. Unit fits right into a standard two-by-two or two-by-four drop ceiling. I have a unit over there, if you guys want to poke around with it, I'd be more than happy to bring that up. Like I said, we do have three units installed currently. They are in the pre-k rooms. Of course, if you guys want to go see what those look like or hear what that sounds like. There is a noise associated with it simply because it is cycling air. And as it cycles through on its first pass, it will eradicate ninety-nine point nine eight percent of those viruses, bacteria, and mold spores that it comes in contact with. This Indiana Department of Health, the CDC, and the National Institute of Health recommends four complete air changes every hour to maintain carbon dioxide load, to maintain viral load. Your HVAC system will give you four and then will give you an additional four in each space as well. This is a hard mount ceiling, but I like this picture for a couple of reasons. It shows how we tie into the lighting grid. So all we will do is we will run MC cable into the nearest lighting fixture. That way, when the light fixture turns on, the unit turns on and the light fixture turns off, the unit turns off. We have gotten to a point where we can clean an air and space in fifteen minutes. It makes no sense to have the unit running when no one's in the space. Teacher comes in at seven o'clock to start prep. You've got four complete air changes before the first student walks in. And then every hour after that, you have an additional four total air changes. Any questions up to this point? Kind of move, move through it a little quick, but questions up to here.
These can fit right in a drop-in.
Correct, yep. Just exactly into that spot right there. Probably that spot right there, time that light.
As far as the noise component, have you heard any feedback from teachers as far as?
Senior rooms, Deb, how bad are they?
I was just gonna say teasingly, that's why my kids are so loud this week. I don't, it's not horrible. It doesn't emit some heat, but I just noticed that because my HVAC is a problem. So it does emit a little bit of heat.
But it's not.
Blowing the air, it's warm air coming.
It's not disruptive to the class in any way. Okay.
It has not been disruptive.
It comes out at about thirty-six decibels, which is about the sound of a fan coming from that stream. That provides a point of context. Would you say that's about right?
Yes, not even that, it doesn't even seem that loud.
It's just kind of this ambient, just, just because there is a filter that is attached to it and there is a fan that is cycling air. Air, when air moves, it just tends to make noise. If I, allow me to go back one slide. So on the intake here, there is a hospital-grade air filtration system that will allow us to catch those physical particles before they go into the unit. And then the clean air comes out here. So if you are in a sandier environment, if you have hair, if you put one in a shop room, something like that, where there are physical particulates, that will get caught in the filter here. We, the only maintenance that's associated with the unit is this filter change right here. There are six quarter-inch screws. That filter costs eleven dollars to replace.
How often do you have to replace it?
Generally, we recommend every six to twelve months, depending upon where you're at. I sold some to my old high school, which is surrounded by cornfields. I had forty-four people in my high school class, if you count my twin sister. And they do it twice a year, simply because. Oh, because sometimes she doesn't count me. She says the best three minutes of her life was when she was born.
So you'd need one of these per classroom?
Generally speaking, yes. Generally speaking, yes. There's a video, but I don't know if I can play that or not. Let me see if I can. This is in a kindergarten classroom in Martinsville, Illinois. So let's see if it'll let me play.
I know, I think that.
I was, that was an eight-foot ceiling and I was like, I was standing right, I was standing right next to it. I was standing right, right next to it.
We were, if, if Deb says it's okay, you don't have to fight with the noise no more. We trust. He says it's good, we trust.
You were in my room today, did you notice?
So overall, just again, it will remove the physical particulates that are in the air. It will destroy the viruses, bacteria, and mold. And then you will get four complete air changes at maximum. If we are talking a space less than a thousand square feet, incrementally we go up. If we're at a five hundred square foot space, you're going to get six to eight air changes every hour. If we're in a smaller space, you get incrementally more. The fan blows at the same, the same speed. Now, benefits to the school, as I've passed around, that is a six-by-six sign. You will receive one for each of your offices, superintendent's office, elementary school office, and high school office. It will have your logo on it, that is just to say, hey, this is something that we have done. We are actively taking care of our students. The rest of these, if we look at the top left, that's a credit card size sign made out of the same material that will go in front of each one of your classrooms and your nurse's station that have one. Simply to say, we have, as you're picking up your pre-k student, as you're picking up your elementary school student, when you have parent-teacher conferences, this is something that we as a district have actively invested in to both preempt any sickness and be reactive to it simultaneously. And then overall, I've got some pretty good data coming out from all of our units. Like I said, we've deployed about fifteen thousand units. I have one school that has done the elementary school and then we're doing the high school. It's just kind of a grant funding thing. We're going to do the high school on February first, once those grant funds release from the state of Ohio. What we have seen is we have seen a seventeen percent increase in student attendance semester over semester in the elementary school. And we have seen a five percent increase in staff attendance. You've noticed that the staff isn't getting sick. I do also want to point out though, that staff data is a little bit flawed. They brought in six new elementary school teachers last year that had just started teaching. The first couple of years out as an elementary school teacher, you just get wrecked anyway before you build your teacher needs system. I want to give a caveat on the, on the teacher side of things, but overall, they are using less substitutes and they are seeing an increase in attendance. And for the first time in twenty-five years, the elementary school has higher attendance than the high school does. Generally speaking, if an elementary school student is missing class, it's probably not their fault. Something else is going on. If a high school student's missing class, then you've got to figure out, is there a chem test? Is there an algebra test? Do they not feel good for practice last night? Something like that. The other thing that we have done, we have created a one-page document that you can send out to all of your interested parties, right? Because you are a public institution, this can go out on your Facebook page, your Instagram, if you have any social media. If you guys do a monthly newsletter or weekly newsletter, that's something that we have created and emailed to Dr. Smith that you guys can send out as well. Simply saying, hey, we understand, we want to make sure your kids are as healthy as possible. This is something that we have done. So again, just kind of as an overall reduction, just kind of a overall review, forgive me, you're going to see an increase in air quality. Students, teachers, staff are going to feel a little bit better and we're going to see a massive reduction in indoor air pollution. That dust or dander is going to get caught in now your HVAC filter and your physical filter in your UVC unit. Mold spores will be eliminated from the air, viruses and bacteria will also be eliminated from the air as well. And then this will be an active remediation for what they've termed sick building center, right? It's just older buildings that do older building things and then we breathe in the air. First, thank you all for having me tonight. I can go through the proposal here next if you wish, but as of right now, what questions do we have?
Is there a lot of grants out there to support this?
So there are a series of funding opportunities for this. I know the state of Indiana has health and safety grants. Those apply. Federal health and safety grants also apply for that as well. There's, these also qualify under any like building infrastructure update grants. I've got building and safety grants that have been used for some of them. So there's six or seven different grant pathways that are available. In addition to, we have partnered with Leef Financial, which is normally a big lending institution. But what they have done for that K-12 space is they have set up a thirty-six month payment plan and zero percent interest. So that school districts can do projects like this without any occurring any interest. So that as grants come in or go, or bonds come and go, chunks can be paid off at that time.
Do you guys look for the grants or would that be on us?
Oh, we've done combinations of both in the past. Now, I've, I've applied for grants on behalf of clients. I've had clients apply for grants. It just kind of depends on. Some grants will allow a third party to apply that's outside of the K-12 space. Some grants will only allow someone within that K-12 space to apply. But generally, I stay pretty hands-on during that grant writing process. Any other questions at this point? Okay, perfect. So what I'll do is I will switch tabs real quick. Assuming my clicker still works, we will jump in over. There we go. Perfect. Alright, so we'll start here. What we have done is we have put together a series of proposals for every classroom, every library, every cafeteria in the building. Now, this is entirely up to you. This is a choose-your-own-adventure story. You can pick and choose where you want to go. This does not include anything outside of the nurse's station, which has already been done in the elementary office, high school office, or superintendent's offices. Mostly because if you are working in your own individual office, you probably aren't having other people come in there and you're just breathing in the air as, as you would on your own. But again, we can add or subtract those as you wish. I have it broken down by room and by hallway. So we can do a multi-faced approach there. Total project, as it stands right now, would be two hundred and one thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. That is a big scary number. What I will say is each unit installed is nineteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars as it sits. We, we have a patent on each one of, on the units themselves. We manufacture these in Florida. All of these are domestic parts. So we will not be subject to any tariffs. We understand the situation here. We understand that there's some air quality concerns. We will reduce the price with any units that you would purchase. That seventeen hundred and fifty dollars will shave off just about two hundred dollars off of each unit, just so it makes it a little bit more fold. I think, oh, I think it shaves off twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars of the project total. I can get that firm number for you, if you wanted all of them. And this is the breakdown. Of course, we've already done the nurse's station there. I believe we've also done E one oh two and one oh four. Are those those room numbers?
Yes, I'm one oh two, yes.
So we went to two and one oh four. So these first three have already been done. So go ahead and knock those off the list. But the rest of these are divvied up all the way to hallway to hallway. Initially, where we see clients start, because that sum is a large number, a lot of clients prefer to break it up into phases. I have preemptively divided it up into phases with Dr. Smith's input, starting with the youngest kids first and then working all the way up to the high schools. So that's a good place to start. Go ahead and jump in if that's okay. So this is the big full massive proposal, each classroom. One by one, by one, there's like twenty pages here. As we go through, I will break them down. There will be a contingent cost for mounting hardware. Generally speaking, it is not going to be a hundred dollars. It will probably end up being two dollars and fifty cents per fixture because we have to use safety chains mounted to the hard seat. Just as you would any light fixture, Indiana Building Code does require it. Last thing we want to do is have an earthquake and have one of these drop on a sixth grader's head. Or maybe the first thing we want to do is have one drop on a sixth grader's head, depending on the sixth grade. And it's just the proposal, you all received copies of this. Most of this information is before. Here is a list of references. Here, I would say probably the best reference close to us would be Springs Valley. Springs Valley has forty of these units in place. And then we've deployed a thousand units in Indianapolis school systems as well. Standard terms and conditions, we'll jump away from that. Right now, we would recommend, of course, up to your approval, of course, starting with the early elementary school classrooms, E one oh one through one ten. Total cost there would be thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, five hundred and sixty-three dollars at that nineteen seventy-seven price. Of course, if, if anything that you guys would prefer, we will do down. That seventeen fifty cost, so shave off some units there. This does include the media centers as well. Simply because those are communal spaces, people are going to be in those spaces more often, to be a little bit louder, they're going to be moving around. There's going to be more of them in those spaces. So we would consider those a high-traffic area. Those, similar to cafeterias, that would make sense as well. Part of it has to do with the ceiling. Your ceiling's a non-standard ceiling, so it adds more volume, so we would six in here. The square footage is kind of a misnomer. Since we are moving air, it is a volumetric measurement. But I could give you the volumetric number, but you would think I'd be selling you a car or a refrigerator. We tend to think more often in square footage. And so with the standard ceiling, a thousand square feet is, everyone can kind of imagine what that is about standard classroom. That's the reason we do the square foot. Cafeterias, cafeterias are a little larger, because are larger congregation areas, so they do have a higher viral, viral load. That would end up being that each cafeteria would require eight. I ended up running an extra unit down here the night that the sample installation unit sprouted legs. And so I was able to walk around the cafeterias a little bit and take a little bit more information through there. So I was able to take a laser measure and take my time and really measure it out. You guys would need eight based on the number of seats that I have found in there. And that does eliminate mold from the air, new viruses, airborne bacteria as well. In the classroom setting, we're kind of facing the same way. There's, it's a little bit more formal, a little bit more standardized. So one unit per classroom is generally pretty solid because everyone's facing the same direction. Once you add the. Once you add the chaos of a lunchroom, and now everybody clustered in pods, they're facing each other. We tend to relax our manners a little bit when we're eating, we're a little bit louder, all of a sudden now we're spreading more germs. So we recommend a little bit more there. And then elementary school classrooms, E two oh two through three twenty-four. I just kind of lumped them via hallways. Of course, you can adjust all of this as you wish. Looking at a large price of forty-five, four seventy-one, pre-discount. Any project over sixty thousand dollars would qualify for the zero percent I deal with with Leaf Financial. Junior, senior high school classrooms, it was kind of hard, based on the fire map, for me to determine what was a junior high classroom, what's a high school classroom. So I just went with the room names, H, uh, the H one hundreds and the H two hundreds. Pre-discount price would be forty-three, four ninety-four. High school classrooms at three hundreds, four hundreds, and five hundreds. This does not include the weight room. I did not have a chance to squeeze into the weight room, so I didn't know quite what the ceiling was like. Or if you guys were interested in adding units to the weight room per se. Some schools are, some schools aren't. We're looking at pre-discount price of thirty-seven thousand five sixty-three. I tried to break it up. And your math was pretty convenient doing so, sub thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand dollars. I wanted every face to be sub forty grand. And of course, you would, for each unit, you would receive that small platform outside the door. You have matte vinyl stickers that you can pass out on parent-teacher nights with the QR code that links directly to the product. And then, of course, each of your large doors, cafeterias, libraries, and offices would get one of those six-by-six signs. As you see there. There is a caveat to the six-by-six sign. It is your logo that goes on there. Legally, I am not allowed to send my printer your logo. I will connect you with them. They have a preset series of blanks created already for any of our clients. They will put the logo on there and ship it to you. Unless you want to go through the lawyers and then I'll give permission to use your logo. It's just simpler if you guys send it over to them. That is the big, bad, quick, and dirty overview. What are our thoughts?
I think it's something that we need to talk about and consider, but we appreciate the information. And if it does improve the health of our children, that's a great thing. And so thank you for coming. Anybody else having any other questions?
So the three units you installed are test units?
They're already installed, uh, they're already running. Um, we were primarily when we do an initial installation, something like that, we like to put it in pre-K areas or nurse stations, simply because those are honestly where the immunocompromised aren't, they haven't received a full vaccination suite yet, and they're younger, and every sick kid's going to find their way to the nurse station anyway. Um, so that's
Those like here on a trial basis or those?
Those are yours permanently.
I know kind of being in a younger company, is there a way to kind of gauge the lifespan of a single unit? And as far as like uh, warranty and down the road?
So we have a full warranty for three years. That I do have to give, uh, we we've deployed fifteen thousand units and I have had three issues uh, with those units. First one, rolling up struck by lightning and everything got fried. I can accommodate for that. Second one, mouse treat through a wire. We came in, re-patched the wire, everything worked fine. The third one was in a drop ceiling in uh, Fort Wayne. Wasps nest got into the drop ceiling, a bunch of wasps got fried. We just replaced the unit. Um, outside of any acts of God or stupid freshman, you have a complete and total three-year warranty. I can tell you that we have had units at Reed Health that have ran for twenty-four hours a day since twenty twenty. Can't tell you how long they'll last past that, but solidly for five years they've been going. And of course, I can give uh, any of our hospital references and school references as well.
Does anyone have any further questions?
You may have touched on this, sorry. And uh, electricity, as far as electricity usage for each unit?
So it, the, we designed it, as we also designed lines, we designed it to be the same one, it's just a light fixture. Exactly, yeah. We didn't want to add anything on the expense rate, especially with um, much as big as tight as they are, of course, the cost of the unit itself, we didn't want to add electricity to it. There are units that do use three hundred watts, there are units that do require three hundred and fifty dollars a year worth of maintenance. Be that as it may. And then we will come in and change the filter as well, so you guys don't even have to worry about that, if that's something that you guys don't have to worry. Install's pretty simple, generally, as long as there's nothing quirky and he wants to nest above the ceiling. Uh, each unit can be installed in about thirty minutes at maximum, and most of that's just schlepping the ladder from top to bottom.
So if we were, if we would decide to do this, especially in phases. Um, if, the, the discounted rate of whatever seventeen fifty, is that locked in as far as, I mean, what we would do now, what we would do?
With, of course, within reason, within the calendar year, of course. So like if, I can't guarantee, the issue that we run into is that there's one place on the planet that does aluminum extrusion really, really well. It's China, it's really tariffed right now. Ours are domestically sourced and always has been domestically sourced. But now everyone else is also trying to source aluminum domestically. So aluminum prices have gone up, as long as I can manufacture it. And still hit that price, of course, absolutely. If for some reason aluminum triples overnight or doubles overnight, like you saw with rubber during COVID. But of course, yes. As with the zero percent with Leaf allows us to buy down interest rates to zero percent for educational institutions. And so as long as Leaf will allow us to do that, that's possible. They will, they update us first of every month, whenever new rates come out, just like a banker and auto, something like that would. Um, so I can't, can't guarantee that the zero percent will last forever. For the month of November twenty twenty-five, it does. But we would earn the price for as long as we could.
Any other questions?
Which is kind of a cop-out answer, I fully acknowledge.
Basically, you're saying the things that's out of your control is out of your control.
Right, yeah. Uh, uh, as lo- as reasonably, as long as you can, yeah, absolutely.
We get that. Alright.
Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming and doing the presentation. Okay, I need to take nominations from the floor here. We need to elect a new vice president for the board. I get a nomination. Anybody have a nomination in mind?
I nominated Brian.
Okay, can I get a second?
Sorry, I have a migraine. Let me, let me redo this. I would like to nominate Brianna Barber.
Okay, well, that was okay. We knew who you wanted. You did good. Alright, does anybody else have a nomination? Or anybody like to second that nomination?
I'll second that.
Alright, I'll second. Okay, all in favor of Breon? Pose, same sign. You're the vice president of the board. And now we got a problem. She's a secretary.
I nominate Jody for the secretary of the board.
I will second that, and Jody will be the secretary. All in favor, raise your right hand, pose, same sign. We're good. That was all leave, right, Courtney?
For now.
Is that okay?
For now. We're good.
Okay. Sorry. I guess I should have done that different. Apologize. Okay. Alright, Dr. Smith? Your report?
I have a report for this month. Um, we are moving to partnering with Nimble to host on a statewide job board for job positions. Uh, we have a landing page that's been hyperlinked to our new website. It's now set up. Um, getting front office staff trained in that new platform. I will say, we posted a few new jobs on there and have been encouraged uh, that we are receiving a deeper applicant pool, and so that has been encouraging um, with that new partnership there. Um, I have attended um, and plan on attending the upcoming city council meeting for Jasonville. We had talked as a board of trying to prioritize that. I wasn't able to attend the one in November, but um, aim to do that in December. Um, the other activities that have happened this past month, I met with mayor, um, our mayor here, Jasonville, Eric, and then Jeff Griffith came as well to talk to me about a potential school-community partnership. They're interested in promoting uh, pickleball locally, and have offered to organize several community members to come into the school, teach the kids how to play. Um, the basics, um, they also have access to portable nets and and equipment, um, paddles and balls. And are also interested in supporting our PE enrichment program and even an after-school activity or after-school club. Um, as well, we also discussed um, with the mayor and Jeff Griffith. They're very interested in making better use of our parks and our reservoir through a partnership with the DNR, and they want to offer some hands-on outdoor science education opportunities. Uh, they invited me and the members of the school board to attend the park board meetings as well that are held the first Saturday of each month at the firehouse, so we can stay coordinated on facilities, programming, and um, joint projects. So that was an encouraging meeting. I wanted to let you know that I've held a first round of grade level and department-level curriculum meetings. Um, we focused on I-Learn checkpoint one. So we now have the results for the first I-Learn checkpoint in math and ELA. We arranged for half-day subs to come in to cover those students, so that they could focus on some time to analyze their data. And then more importantly, um, what we're going to do about it, so how we're going to respond. So we worked on some action planning and response to those scores and those gaps. Um, and allowing them some dedicated time to collaborate on their instructional practices and analyze the data. Uh, we just held a math department meeting yesterday, and it was very productive in how we're going to be addressing scores as well in the high school, in the seventh and eighth grade with I-Learn. Um, and then we've anticipated that we will do this at the end of every checkpoint this school year. Um, and see how that works and then reevaluate that, um, how those data digs are going moving forward. We have launched the new website. Hope you got a chance to look at that. We've had positive feedback regarding that. Um, and and the new look that we have online, and that was a priority for us um, to do that as well. We have, uh, Veterans Day program was very successful. We hosted a well-attended, well-thought-out, well-planned Veterans Day program. Um, it was a meaningful reminder to us of our school and community, who we serve. Um, I particularly appreciate the music program that enriched the, the program for sure. And I know you've been busy also with the play and now Christmas program coming up. Um, so I'm grateful to be a part of a school and a community um, that values and recognizes the sacrifice and the service and serving others above self. So I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this community and this school. The elementary has launched um, an award ceremony. We're looking for, continue looking for opportunities, K twelve. We don't want to ever miss uh, an opportunity to celebrate student accomplishments, so we're starting to do that as a board at the beginning of our board meetings. So the elementary hosted their first-ever award ceremony. Uh, we're, or we're getting back to it, I guess, after COVID. I should still want to say first ever. Um, and it was a nice way to recognize, and I will tell you, I attended and appreciate Mr. Turpin and um, Amy as well, Ms. Hammond, Hammond, in getting um, the teachers galvanized behind this new idea. Willing to sacrifice a little bit of instruction time for the sake of um, promoting student performance and wanting to expand that K twelve. Um, and it was nice to see, it was clearly made an impact when you saw their faces light up when they heard their name announced, and then some of them leaving. Um, and being encouraged, if you didn't hear your name this time, but you know, we'll, we'll hear it next time, and leaving them with that um, encouragement. Um, let's see, what that is. And I think that is all. I, I have one more uh, board update, or it's not really a board update, but just want to make you aware. Um, in July, there was a new, a public law update, a public law one ninety-five. The prior maximum board compensation, that you could be compensated as a board member, the ma- maximum was two thousand dollars. That law was updated in July. Now, the cap or the maximum becomes ten percent of the lowest starting salary. So for us, the cap would move to four, four thousand five hundred dollars. Um, tip, boards are typically make that decision. We could do it at any time. We could do it next month if we wanted to reconsider. Um, a lot of times, that oftentimes happens in January, when we are reorganizing and restructuring as a board. So I wanted to make you aware of that law that had changed, just put that on your radar, so you have some time to think about, about that. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I mostly traveled, but I'm sure somebody else is doing it. How about the elementary?
Okay, I'm going to present the um, highlights from the elementary. October twenty-four, uh, the PTO put on the Halloween dance where over a hundred and fifty kids were present. They also have the chance to go out and um, do the haunted trail that the FFA put on outside the school. On October twenty-nine, uh, Mrs. Morse held the Title One meeting for Title One parents to come in and discuss the laws and the rules of our program, and Donuts and Juice was available. October thirty-first, our pre-K, K and first-grade students dressed up in their Halloween costumes, paraded through the school. Um, this year, their brain changed to mind group had tables set up in the elementary gym, and they gave out trick-or-treat bags to all the kids, so the kids really enjoyed that. November fourth, we just presented some of our, introduced some of our character award winners for attitude. December, the character award will be kindness. November the tenth, Dr. Smith just mentioned, we did our attendance and honor roll awards for the first nine weeks. And there were over sixty students um, recognized for perfect attendance. And there were over a hundred and fifty students recognized, recognized for all A and AB honor roll. Fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball opened their season at Oak, at Eastern Tuesday night. The girls opened their season December eighth versus Spencer Elementary at home. And then we just opened a elementary apparel shop, and it will be open till December third, and Travis said it's going really well so far, so.
I did just click. Yeah, that's good.
I did make the designs.
Is it what you handed out?
It's what you handed out?
No, they uh, actually went by there last week, said, hey, can you put me some t-shirts together? Said, what do you want to see? I said, I'll just be make it look make it look nice, and that's what they came up with, and then uh, if you go on the apparel stores, you share it on Facebook. Um, with sporting goods, picked out two or three different designs that are different from all you've done the past couple of years, so. I think they're catching on.
Thank you. Shane, you're, you're last, but not least, buddy.
Always bring up the reader. Uh, well, since Dylan's not here, I'll go ahead. Uh, we had a couple volleyball stations, uh, Yana Clark and Riley Falk made all district one A. Indiana Volleyball Coaches Association. Uh, Riley also made all-state one A second team. And you're gonna have to help him with this in July. She made junior all-state.
Junior, junior all-stars, yeah.
Stars, yeah.
Um, yeah, she'll play Sunday. We go to Lawrence North on Sunday to play, um, for the, it's the Indian All-Star, the junior team. Yeah.
Kudos to them. Um, a couple of weeks ago, Spell Bowl travels to Sullivan. They finished second out of four teams in their class there. And finished second out of the eleven teams that were there. And that finished about, and finished seventh in the state in their class. So uh, you know, always proud of those kids, Stevie Anderson, Riley Barkus, Wade Boyd, Hart Mule, Weston Coleman, Waylon Dudley. Carl SD, Carter Morris, Point Eddle, Cameron Paul, Taylor Pointer, and Branson Spizer, you know. Uh, Spell Bowl hadn't been a big thing for years here, and they've kind of took over it, and have done a great job with it. And things are looking good with our, our competitive teams. Drone team competed in a spooky smash-up in the Wamash. I'm not exactly sure where that was, but team had the highest autonomous score. Uh, they won the judges award. And uh, this time, we have three teams in the top twenty of the world's skills ranking. And they're, excuse me, they're competing in River Twenty-second, that's the Terre Haute Airport there. They're gonna have a hangar up there and do their drone program up there, so. Uh, that's, uh, they were flying around in the hallways. If you haven't heard this weekend, we did have a little incident, but we'll get over with that and go on. We're proud of our drone team. Uh, you ought to mention Mrs. Sparks and her crew for the Drone Club presentation, Death by Dessert. Just a, a great job. The dinner, I think, went well that night. It was well-attended. I didn't make it Sundays, I was Saturdays. And everybody I talked to was really proud and happy with the way it goes, and hope to continue that, that trend. Um, mentioned the best, better tape over. November twelfth, we had senior interviews, and that's always a big. What a, it's a great experience for our seniors that they don't often get. And uh, it wouldn't be possible without Mrs. Meyer, Mrs. Ross, Paul, and others, but especially the volunteers that come in here and interview our kids, running through the mill, freedom like they're supposed to in an interview most. A lot of kids don't get a chance to interview until they're out of their first job, and I think this is really important. I know Mrs. Meyer had myself, and I think Mrs. Dr. Smith came in and talked to the kids about interview tactics and stuff, and I thought they received it very well. Tomorrow night, six thirty, you got the band and choir, concert choir together in the elementary gym. Excuse me. Excuse me.